Newport City Regular Council Meeting is called to order at 6:30 p.m. Present at the meeting are council members, President John Wilson, Councilman Charbonneau, Councilman Shawn, Councilman Curtis. Excuse me, staff members, Treasurer Johnson, Program Director Tarian and Controller. Additional staff members in the audience, Police Chief Dean. Department Head, Mr. Brinier. From the Treasury Department, Mr. Tarian. From the Review Board, right, was Dennis Shinet, right? Mike Brown, Rec Director, Andrew Touche, Captain at the Fire Department. Anybody who I have missed? Okay. There we go. Next item, additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. President Wilson?
No.
Councilman Charbonneau?
No.
Councilman Shawn?
No, thank you.
Councilman Curtis?
No, thanks.
Treasurer Johnson? Mr. Tarian?
No, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of February 5, 2024, February 6, 2024, and February 9, 2024. May I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of February 5, 2024?
So moved.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Comments? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, motion is carried. May I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of February 6, 2024?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 9, 2024?
So moved.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Comments? Discussion?
Just a minor thing.
Mm-hmm.
Says Mayor Sullivan called the meeting Tom Order. Said to order. Small.
That's a big one.
Want to call it Tom.
Let's call this meeting Tom's meeting.
That's all.
Thank you. We will pick--
Oh, you know what I meant.
Okay. I have a motion and a second and a correction to the title. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Next item on the agenda is the conflict of interest policy with an anticipated vote. We have a current policy of interest in place. However, over the years, we've had to actually have it reviewed. We voted a couple of meetings ago to have the attorneys look at it and update it and bring it back to us. And so it is here for us right now. If you would please pull that conflict of interest policy. I just want to point out a couple of changes. There's only a few. If you would go to the conflict of interest means any of the following part A. Okay, under number one. After the word spouse, the word partner has been added. If you go to, or uncle, brother, or sister-in-law in the same sentence, business associate. The next word was or, which was taken out. So it should just say business associate, comma, employer, a comma added, employee, comma, and then the words or organization of which the public officer is an officer, member, volunteer, or owner, having added. Okay? With me?
Yeah.
If you go to E. What's been added is that a public officer shall not participate as a public officer in any public hearing, quasi-judicial decision, policy decision, or official act that may confer a pecuniary benefit or a legal right to an organization of which the public officer is a member, employee, volunteer, or owner. If you go down to Article six, I'm sorry, Article seven, consideration of recusal. I'm just going to read this part and tell you what's been added. Once there has been a disclosure of an actual or perceived conflict of interest, other public officers may be afforded an opportunity to ask questions or make comments about the, and this is what's been added, actual or perceived conflict of interest. Okay? Got it? If you go down to B. At the end of the sentence, the words to the extent allowed by law have been added. If you go down to Article 10, Enforcement Number One. The word chair was stricken and the words mayor or the president of the Board of Aldermen was added. So that was just exchanged for the word chair. And then if you go down to this, in the same, number one. This shall not take place in situations where the, and then the same thing. Chair was removed and mayor or the president of the Board of Aldermen was replacing the word chair. And then finally, if you go to number four. Where it says upon majority vote in an open meeting, the city council may request parentheses but not order in parentheses. That the offending public officer, these are the words that were added, recuse themselves from the matter in which they have a conflict of interest or. Okay? Resign from his or her office was already there. Okay, those were the only changes that were made. Okay? So. May I have a motion to accept the conflict of interest policy as provided to us by our attorneys here.
Question.
Sure.
Five E. Is there a change? I'm just--
Which one, five?
Prohibited conduct. Five E.
No. There was no change until you come to E here. E, this is what was added.
I don't need that.
Yeah. No, nothing was changed.
Language is wrong.
A public officer shall not participate as a public officer--
No, not, not, we're on the same five E.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what was added. Yes, yours isn't in red. I highlighted it in red so I could identify what your, what changes were made for you.
But the language still doesn't match.
Okay, let's look at it.
The first sentence.
Public officer shall not participate as a public officer. It should take out the word the.
Thank you.
In any public hearing.
I'm good. And the one you were referring to is where? What is that number? The whole section. The same? Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly the same. Mine's just in red so that if you had any questions. Okay, so. Any other questions or are we going back to the motion?
Sorry, I'm just doing a quick review.
No, take your time. We'll, I'll bring the motion back after you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
My, my thought process is why does this have to be done tonight and not at the next meeting? We, we have not, as I said here earlier. This was not received in our packet. We haven't read it. And there was quite a few changes in there. And I'm not done, and because I'm reading what you're reading. But I don't like the fact that
So--
we can wait one more, before the election, if that's one that needs to be done. But the thing is, I don't like getting stuff as I come into the meeting and expect me to vote on them. I haven't even read it yet.
So we received it from the attorneys after, that's why. But you, there's absolutely no reason why it has to be done before an election or after. It's just that the attorneys were retained to do it. They finally got it over to us and so here it is.
In my world, and we ought to table this till the next meeting. For at least we've all had a chance to read it and digest it.
Motion to table.
I can, I'll make that motion.
No, I just want that, so I have a motion.
Yeah, you have a motion.
Yeah, so I'm going to withdraw that motion just so that we'll do your motion and then let's hear whatever. But let them finish reading it to see if they have anything else that they want to ask. Is that right?
Well, they read it now, they might like it. I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so let's--
I haven't seen it.
I'll second what John said, just--
Okay, so I'm going to ask for that motion to, I have your motion to table.
Motion to table till our next meeting, which is, I believe, the fourth or third.
The fourth.
All right.
I have, that's okay. I have a motion to table until the fourth. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it. The motion is carried.
Madam Mayor, where is that policy now? Can I get a copy of it?
I will get you a copy. It's, it, this is what will go forward on the next, on March 4th. So I will send you exactly what we leave there.
Madam Mayor, can you give it available to the public?
Please wait to be recognized. Please do not speak out. I would hate to have to ask people to leave because I'm not recognized. Next item on the agenda. Do we have mail in? Okay. Is the personnel policy review with a possible executive session, one VSA, Section 313A1B Could we just be sure that our city council is on? And that she can hear us?
Hi, I'm here.
Good, excellent, thank you. So. Okay, I'm sorry. Kicked it my way. It was clean. May I have a motion to find that premature public knowledge of discussion of the rights and obligations between the city and its employees relative to the personnel policy and of privileged attorney-client communications would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it. The motion is carried. May I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss matters relating to the personnel policy and to discuss attorney-client privileged communications and to invite our city council, our comptroller, and our future city manager to join in executive session?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion is carried and we are in executive session. We're out of executive session. No action was taken. May I please have a motion to approve the personnel policy as presented?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments? Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, sorry, I apologize.
Stacy Tarian, Assistant Town City Clerk. I don't know what you guys discussed, but there are a few errors that were in the personnel policy that I think need to be addressed. I am one half of the advisory committee defined in our current policy. And I just wanted to address just a few issues. Number one was some holidays were missing. New Year's Day and Martin Luther King Junior Day were missing from the policy. Battle of Wellington was listed, but we don't get that. We get a floating holiday instead. Overtime, we currently get eight hours. We get overtime after eight hours, not after 40 weeks. The same as the public works in the police department get. The new policy also removes sections for disciplinary actions, appealing, and grievance procedures. And then addendum B, which is for the clerk treasurer's department. Mr. Johnson would like to add the clerk treasurer employees work under the direct supervision of the elected clerk treasurer. And also that the clerk treasurer would like to add the word discipline to the provision so he can discipline the employees.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
No.
Sorry, could I just? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I don't understand this, our current policy from 2014. We started working on this back in 2020, a panel of us, plus a council member. The public works and the police department get three-year union contracts negotiated where both sides talk about it. The policy that we had been working on obviously has been changed and there was never any comments to the 12 non-union employees that this affects. And I just don't feel it's right that nothing has been said to us and you're just going to approve the policy without discussing it with the 12 members that this policy addresses. That's my comment.
Any other comments? Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay.
Nay.
Okay, so I have two ayes and two nays. I vote aye. Next item on, yes.
May I have a roll call on that?
You may. Pardon?
Nay. Aye. Aye.
Nay.
And may, can you explain what that is and has the non-union employees been briefed on what this is?
So we discussed all of this in executive session, all of these points. So I can't tell you what we discussed in executive session. But everybody here is satisfied with what's happened. What this means is that the policy is passed.
And Madam, is this a new policy or is this--
It's an updated policy.
Updated from when?
Started in 2014.
And where is this new policy? Where can the public see that?
Once we sign off on it, if it's, whatever is allowed to be shared with the public, we will--
And when, when will you sign off on it?
Are you signing it?
Even though it passed? Okay, next item on the agenda is the Landing Street road closure for the Northern Star boat inspection with an anticipated vote. This boat needs to be brought on dry dock for potential repairs and we are going to have a representative--
Yes, David Converse, Chairman of MCIM and the Northern Star. The main reason we're looking at the Landing Street road is because Lake Memphamagog is an international body of water. We fall under Coast Guard regulations. And every five years, we have to have the boat pulled out for a Coast Guard inspection. We did it the last time in 2019 down at the city dock, which worked well. But we had to hire a big crane to come from Morrisville to do it. Durashe's cranes aren't big enough. And they were there for, well, they set up the night before, but they were, we were in and out of the water the same day. And it was $12,000 for that, at that period. So we got another quote from them to do it there again this year with the city's permission if we need to. And this year it's going to be $16,000 for the crane. But we also have to do some repair work to it. We have to pull a shaft and have another shaft ready to put in and put a new depth cylinder on it, do a couple of the things. And Coast Guard has to look at the bottom. We pressure wash the bottom too. So we're looking at other alternatives to pull the boat, which down here on this end is not too many. So we're looking at the Landing Street facility, thinking we could just pull it straight up with a, there's a guy with Green Mountain Marine in Burlington that came up with an idea. He's got these big air bladders that you put several in a line and then you just pull it up on the air bladders and it could sit there and then we somehow push it in. I don't know exactly how yet, but. So we were hoping to be able to do it at Landing Street if we can, our first choice. And it will block the street partly, but nobody will get blocked in because it can go out either side. And it, it won't even be up to where that vacant lot is now where Deena just tore the building down. It might be up 40 feet up on the shore, something like that. And I just talked to him or emailed with him today and he's wondering if to pull the shaft out, it can be done in, like now, we put plugs in the boat to keep it from leaking and then we send it in, we bring it back. He would put it in onshore. But he was asking if he could pull the shaft when it's onshore and then maybe wait a couple weeks to get the shaft made and put it back. And that, I don't know about that. But I talked to Deena, she doesn't have a problem if we do it there. We, I talked with the mayor and the city police a while ago in town and they didn't have a problem. So our anticipation is that hopefully it won't be there more than two days at the most. Things go well, maybe just a day. But we're just looking for permission to haul it out there and see how that goes this year. It might be too shallow for us to do it there, that's the main problem. We don't have much runoff, it appears so far this year for spring runoff and that would be a big help. So that's what we're looking at. That would be our first choice if we can do it. If not, we'll have to do it again over the city dock area with the crane.
Do you happen to have the dates that you're looking at?
Be the first week of May, not exactly sure of the date yet. But that's what we want to do. Captain's coming up early to be here for it. And that's, we've told the crane that would be the week we would do it. They're kind of reserved, but. So we, we gotta do it then so we can be ready for the end of the month.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, yeah, just after our initial conversation, I had went over just to check the area out and there is some low-hanging wires there. So I'm not sure, and they're literally like almost right where the old boat lodge is. So I'm not sure if the boat would even fit underneath those. So that might be worth checking out before that gets too far. And maybe you've already looked at it, I don't know, but--
I didn't look up, I was looking down at them.
Yeah. So I noticed that and I don't know, I don't think the boat's going to fit underneath those, honestly. So it might be a moot point.
I'll look at that tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay, so are you going to look at that?
Yeah, I'll look tomorrow.
Will you just go back to us on that?
Well, if, can we say get a--
We're going into the, but I just want to know, you'll be able to do that tomorrow?
Yes, yes, I definitely will, yeah.
Okay. May I have a motion to authorize the Landing Street road closure for Northern Star boat inspection as first option? Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the NCDD Downtown Master Plan, MOU, anticipated vote. As discussed and approved by this council at a prior council meeting, the mayor was able to work with the state to retain the $40,000 that was granted to the city based on some inaccurate designation. But the monies were then granted with the redefined purpose of approving the appropriate designee. The balance in those funds is $30,000 and that would be used for the appropriate purpose of the NCCD Downtown Master Plan. In addition, the mayor announced at a prior council meeting that the city had entered into a statement of Vermont grant agreement for $55,923.71 for a special fund award for the redevelopment of the city of Newport's downtown's master plan. So in accordance with the, excuse me, the grant, NCCD-- So in accordance with the, excuse me, the grant, NCCD and the city need to join in this MOU to proceed in accordance with the grant approvals. So now I'd like to recognize Mr. La Force if he would like to explain anything further about the master plan.
I can, I have a presentation that I'd like to share. I know you guys want to get out of here, but I'll make it quick.
No, nobody wants to leave, they've asked.
So, thanks for having me, good evening, everybody. So I'm currently on the board of Newport City Downtown Development. I'm also chairing an economic development task force. So I'm going to take you through some slides here. I'm going to start at a high level just to kind of give you a preview of what Newport City Downtown Development's been working on. There's been some exciting changes in the board and then I'll hit bullet points about the MOU and go through those. So as you know, Newport City Downtown Development's a nonprofit corporation and we're championing community collaboration to create a vibrant and thriving downtown in the city of Newport. Our current board of directors, our president is Sarah Chadburn, our secretary is Ed Gil de Rubio, our treasurer is Scott Grimes. Excited to share that we have three new board members that went to their first meeting today, which is Omar Mallett, Dr. Malik Blue Spruce, Andrea Carbine, and Emily Smart. So great candidates for our board, really excited. But our other board members are myself, Eleonora Legere, and Felicia Updike. And then we also have Tinti Rani from the state of Vermont as an ex officio. So I thought it'd be good to kind of go over our financial support for our group and kind of show you where the money's coming from to support all our initiatives. So a big part is our lead sponsors. We've done a good job of going around the community this past year and getting lead sponsors and that summed up the $50,000 so far. We're still working on that initiative, but most of our, some of our lead sponsors are Community National Bank, The Work Commons, built by Newport, Pick 'n Shovel, Spates Family LLC, JP Resort, and Blue Spruce Health. So we're really grateful for their contribution and their contributions added real quickly back. Also, $30,000 comes from the city of Newport, which also supports our general operating budget. We also received a $25,000 foundation grant from the Carmelo Failing. We also received another $25,000 grant from the Vermont Designated Downtown Fiber Street Grant. We have several event sponsors which equal to $10,000, which are Subsec Bank, Century 21, Jim Campbell Real Estate, and New Orleans County Board of Realtors. And then lastly, $10,000 for event income, which our big one is Winter Saturdays, which just concluded last weekend and has been a really good success this year, so we're really excited about that. Right now, our group is managing about a million dollars in community project funds and grants. The biggest one being the $500,000 grant for the 23 East Main Workforce Development Project, which is the house in the quarter of the bottom of the hill at East Main Street. $362,000 for the US, from the US Forest Service and that grant is to help us design and build Newport's Urban Treescape, which we're really excited about. $92,000 from the USDA Rural Business Development Grant and that grant is funding things like the kiosk project that's going to be installed this spring, I think, right down here next to the municipal buildings. Downtown promotions and small business technical assistance as well for our area businesses. $18,000 from the Northern Forest Center and that's to complete the waterfront path wave landing project, which we're really excited about. And then lastly, $15,000 from the Vermont Arts Council for the sculpture project that we're working with North Country High School on, which is another exciting project. So in November, we started a new task force for economic development and basically that task force was put together to educate ourselves about successful strategies for long-term economic development for the city of Newport. I have to say that this group is very committed. We meet twice a month and a lot of these folks are business owners or related to business in the area and they've been fully committed. We haven't missed a meeting since November and it's gone really, really well and we're learning a lot. So I just want to name those people, myself, Alan Stanley from Subsec Bank, Megan McClure from Farm and Forest Century 21, Chris Hamlet from Pick 'n Shovel, Rick Woodward from The Work Commons, Green Mountain Natural Foods, Sarah Chadburn from Community National Bank, and Deena Gray from the Eastside Restaurant. So I would definitely encourage everybody to thank these folks because, like I said, they run businesses and we're meeting two hours twice a month and they're really committed to the success of Newport. The other exciting thing is we just secured an individual on a volunteer basis that's agreed to work 10 to 15 hours strictly on economic development for the city. His name is Brian Gray. Brian grew up in New Orleans County, went to school at North Country High School, loves the area. He just recently retired and he retired for the energy industry, where he served 12 years in a management position at Vermont Gas and then the last six years as a general manager of the Energy Co-op of Vermont. So he just started two weeks ago. It's going really well so far and we're really excited about the possibilities that Brian can bring to us. So you saw in your packet the proposed MOU, so I'm not going to go line by line of the MOU, but I just want to go over some bullet points of that. So basically what we're proposing is that NCDD will manage the development of an enhanced and updated downtown master plan for and with the city of Newport. So basically our role will be to identify and resource an appropriate company to create an enhanced master plan to guide a decade-long redevelopment effort for the downtown Newport area. So some of the resources that we'll use to guide the development of that plan, the 2018 waterfront and downtown master plan, results of community engagement over the last decade, current community engagement, and then best practices from sister cities in the state of Vermont. As far as limits of our authority as a manager of the development of this enhanced master plan, NCDD will manage the process in close consultation. I gotta get some water.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Will manage the process in close consultation with the city council and city manager and appropriate staff. NCDD can make recommendations to the mayor and council but cannot make substantive decisions without their approval. As far as financial assumptions and the memorative understanding, NCDD has the capacity to manage the project in our current budget and is not requesting additional administrative funds to manage this project. Funds to pay the approved vendor are designated for this purpose and are being held by the city of Newport. And NCDD will request funds for payment to the vendor only with a signed contract and payment authorization approved by the mayor and the council. So I tried to be quick.
You did, good job. I don't know, nobody can bring me water.
Thank you to many of you.
No, we've got this, we're going to have our questions in accordance with the fact.
Okay.
Okay, but thank you for that.
All right.
Okay, so can I have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the MOU as presented and for the funds to be appropriated in accordance with the grant terms? I have a motion, do I have a second? Any comments? Further discussion?
What was the total again? Is it the $85,000?
I knew you were going to ask me that. It's the, it's, yeah, $85,000, all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried, congratulations. Next item on the agenda is 2021 Homeland Security Grant Equipment Anticipated Vote. So this will, our chief is still here right? This will pay for specific computers and other equipment. I'm going to ask the chief to please give us a brief update on what's actually covered and whether there's some actions.
Yeah, so this is a Homeland Security Grant that was reallocation from 2021 funds that were not spent. So they opened it back up. I had no idea how much money was going to be reallocated, so I had applied for the grant originally. It's very competitive, there was like 28 agencies between law enforcement, other municipalities, fire departments all throughout the state and we were one of the three selected. So what I had submitted for was MDCs, mobile data computers, seven of those. So those will actually go in our cruisers. We haven't had those for, I don't know, probably, let's say 10 years maybe, since we got rid of them. So trying to get those back in. And the other part of the equipment is night vision goggles. That is just a tool and a resource that we can use for some of our special responses that are required.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if you have any other questions, just let me know.
So may I have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the grant?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried. Congratulations, oh, don't go away, I see a question from Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so how much is the, excuse me, how much is the grant? How many terminals is the city going to actually get? And the chief said that they haven't had it for about 10 years when they got rid of them. Why did the, why did they get rid of them?
So the grant is for, the award amount's $92,242.
How much?
$92,242. And the reason that we got, I was not the chief when they got rid of them last time, so I can't really answer that question, I'm not sure why they got rid of them. But I do know it's a huge benefit to have the access on the side of the road to be able to lift things up with some of the law enforcement sensitive data that we are required to have rather than inundate dispatch with some of those responses and questions that we need.
Yes, I was just going to say if you need us to send you the dollars amount, we would do it.
Yeah, I would like that, I would like to actually see the, see the application. So I think I understand what the computers do, but, so I can explain to my readers, what, you know, what do they do, the chief kind of explained it, I think, but...
Chris, if you want to just stop by the office, I can give you a really good explanation.
Okay.
Sure, yeah, just goodbye.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is the CRRP Grant with an anticipated vote. I just want everyone to know that the language in the certificate of good standing that was incorporated in this grant had raised some concerns. So the mayor discussed these concerns with our city attorneys and the department head of, excuse me, the Department of Water Works confirmed that the city has no current discharge violations. So because of that, I'm going to be asking for a motion to allow the mayor to sign off on the CRRP Grant that includes the certificate of good standing.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Comments? Further discussion? Well, that's that, they know that, this is just the certificate of good standing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the Certificate of Highway Mileage with an anticipated vote. So this is the certification of the city's highway mileage for the year ending February 10, 2024 and there are no evident changes. Mr. Bernier, do you want to say anything or are we good to go with just, did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, may I have a motion to sign the certificate of highway mileage for the year ending February 10, 2024?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second, any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried.
So do we all make the sign?
We all have to sign like in a row? Okay, it looks like that, right? I'll sign small. Thank you. Okay, coming back to authorization to bid for reappraisal, RFP, with an anticipated vote. As we've discussed at previous council meetings with the assistance of the comptroller and the appropriate department heads, we have been identifying performance policy updates that have been needed and as such, one area that's being updated is the bidding process and the way bids will be handled and we will be moving forward with that update. As of now, we would like to have a motion to approve the zoning administrator to have authorization to bid a public bid for RFPs for reappraisal. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, comment? Mr. Ross?
When is the reappraisal to be conducted? And is this part of the state's requirement in order appraisal of grant and drop list of below on a certain level?
Zoning Administrator, Mr. Chaney. You know, I like you saying clothes, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Basically, the equalization studies came back in January, the common level of appraisal and the coefficient dispersion put us well across the threshold. We, we'll get the order in July. We have 150 days to do a final plan of compliance, but only, but they have to do a preliminary and they require 60 days to approve that. The actual appraisal, I've talked to three companies, they're scheduling out to 2027, 2028, which is why I'd like to get on it now so we don't get any further behind because we've got two bad years and one good year and next year we're going to drop off a good year and get a bad year, so problem's going to get bigger.
Stay with us.
Okay.
So I have any further discussion, I have a motion and a second? Oh, I apologize.
That's fine.
You have to catch me when my glasses keep on, you know?
I just had one question. We found last time, really want me to stand up?
I do.
Should we join hands?
I'll even hold the microphone.
We found last time when they did the reappraisals, the gentlemen came around to all the houses and they looked at our square footage and they looked at the condition of our roofs and they looked at all of that and they made an evaluation based upon that of what they thought the house was worth. Then, if you didn't like the evaluation through various steps, you went to, you could go on appeal. And the strange thing was that most people, even like the big people who were involved with property around here, didn't know that when you did the appeal and you were all ready to argue your square footage and your condition of your roof and all of that, the person who, the judge, who was listening to it and the lawyer for the city who knew what the process was, were all looking at us like we were crazy because they had shifted the analysis of what your property was worth from all of the things I just talked about to what comparable houses around the city were selling at. And so I'm only curious as to when you look for people who are going to do the appraisals of our houses, would it be worth trying to find somebody, if there is anybody, who is going to evaluate it in the same way the judiciary would be evaluating our houses by what the house is worth on the market as opposed to the condition of the house, the square footage of the house, whether or not you have a two-car garage, et cetera, et cetera? Just a thought.
So the assessments are standardized in the state of Vermont. Everybody in the state uses what they call CAMA software, computer assisted mass appraisal systems. And that's designed to standardize the assessments across the state so that we have equality within our educational taxes and our municipal taxes. So that is the program that actually controls the concept and it's based on a number of different things, sales comparison, income, so on and so forth. I'm not sure exactly what you were told at that point, but that's how we're going to do it going forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have a motion and a second for the discussion from the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to copy that paperwork.
You, that, my administrator.
Oh, you want me to hear?
So did you hear what Mr. Roy asked for?
What paperwork are you looking for?
Well, somebody, what, Mr. Johnson, somebody just handed me.
Okay, that's a memo, yeah.
Well, just explain what it is because I need to see in front of him.
I'm not sure I understand the question, Chris.
Is it, he want, I'm sorry.
Did he go where he wanted?
You have.
You have what you want.
Yeah, must be something else.
Okay, no, that's it. Okay, just want to make sure that's what you need. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the tax map maintenance contract with an anticipated vote. So as we did discuss in prior meetings, the tax maps were not updated. And our zoning administrator, thank you, and our department heads and our IT contractor, mayor and the comptroller have all had discussions on how best to get this tax, the tax maps updated, that's top tackle man, okay? Our zoning administrator has worked effectively and efficiently to make this happen. So I'm going to ask for a motion to sign the tax map maintenance contract.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comment?
Well, I have a question, but yeah, after.
This is your shot?
Well, no.
Do you have a comment? Go ahead, because we have.
No, I don't live in the city, but I have a question.
It's okay. Which question?
Well, I was gonna wait your out for the vote, but why wasn't the map updated?
Oh, boy. So basically, there, the two areas that were issues was, one, the buildings that had occurred since the time in which the original contact was signed almost 20 years ago had never been added to the mapping. Okay, so we had 20 years of buildings that were not on the maps themselves. In addition to that, the data that is contained within my assessment software was not being uploaded and then downloaded into the GIS system. So although I had current data, the public mapping system was not current. That also affected the fact that our tax maps, which are generated by this mapping system, were also not accurate in relationship to the specific parcels. Most of that has been rectified at this particular point, although I'm not sure that we have worked all the bugs out of the system as of yet.
Good?
I'm good, yeah, but I'd just like to see a copy of the paperwork that you have up.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. I'll make another one for you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the final certification for 2023 as billed grand list with an anticipated vote. By putting this forward, we would, the treasurer and all of us would be representing that there are no appeals or suits pending and that if offered in evidence in any court in the state, that such list shall be received as a legal grand list of the city. And the assessor would have had an official notification from the taxpayer that they were appealing the decisions. So may I have a motion to certify the 2023 grand list as billed?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Comment? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Right, there we sign here. You want it?
You want it?
Do you want a copy? Yes, we need a copy for Mr. Roy. There you go. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the water and sewer rate discussion anticipated vote. As we, the council has been discussing over the past months and as we've been sharing with the residents as we went through the budget and identify the need for appropriate sampling going forward of salaries that are going to be allocated to the water and sewer funds as well as the use of our line of credit. It has come to a point where a discussion of water and sewer rates is now needed with timely action needed as well. So as we said over the past meetings, the mayor and the appropriate department heads and officials have taken a deep dive into the city's financials and the water, sewer and tax rate structure. As was noted, it was brought to our attention and to the council's attention at recent meetings that there has actually been some cash flow issues and losses over the years that have been allowed to continue under a pattern that allows for cash flow movements without actually identifying solid solutions and best practices. And with this deep review, we're now going to try to discuss and address some of these issues. The mayor and the comptroller and the treasurer's department and the head of DPW and we met with Wayne Elliott and we went over many options. We looked at other towns and the city's approaches. And even though each is specific to their own territory as well as the water meter situation and its current effect on grants. For example, as it stands now, while we have the streetscape grant, including water meters, the funding source was never applied for and USDA would not, with the current water rates of the city, be a funding source for the city. So at this point, I want to begin the discussion and I'm going to ask the treasurer to, if you have anything that you'd like to say.
Well, as we've discussed before, we're in a crunch situation at this point. Over the years, we've asked many times if the water rates, water and sewer rates would be increased, and they have not been. They increased 10% last year, which really didn't make much of a dent in the problem. We bill an average of about $430,000 a quarter. What we should be billing is over $600,000 a quarter. So we're losing around $200,000 every quarter in revenue. Our losses for the last, I'll let it back to 2014 and started gauging down the losses, profit, operational losses from operations. There were losses in 14, 15, and 16, the council did raise the rates. It kind of bounced back a little bit for a year or two, and then it headed downhill again. It's been going downhill ever since. We're losing some loss of operations, a little over $500,000 a year. At this point, we're at a point now where something's gonna have to be done with the rates. We can't continue along like this. Mayor mentioned the line of credit. The line of credit was never meant to subsidize the water and sewer. That's meant if we run out of money in the general fund or need money to pay the bills, do you owe the line of credit? Well, you're borrowing the line of credit because the general fund is paying, subsidizing the water and sewer fund. So we have to borrow the line of credit to pay the bills to the general fund. And that's where we are now. I think, I hate to put a figure out there, but it's gonna be a sizable increase in the water and sewer rate, particularly the sewer side of it, because that's where the biggest loss is coming from, the sewer side. Something's gonna be done if we keep going like this. And we're into the general fund at this point, over a million and a half that this water and sewer fund owes to the general fund at this point. And the longer we go, that's gonna increase.
And, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it was the recommendation of treasurer that we raise the fixed costs would be the most appropriate way to start right now?
Yeah. When we, when we met with Wayne.
Right.
I mentioned that Wayne thought it was a good idea. I think the fixed cost for everything, if we raise the fixed cost a certain percentage across the water metered and non-metered, so all the fixed cost, we raise a certain percentage. I think it's gonna be 40, 50% on those things.
And by.
And I think on top of that, the usage rates is gonna have to be an increase there to make this all up. Not what anybody wants to hear, but.
Well, it is what it is. And so by raising the fixed cost also, then we would be able to get to a point where we could actually then go back and approach USDA to do specific parts of the grants
Yeah, rate plan, absolutely.
because our rates would be appropriate. And I also, we also asked Wayne Elliott if that would be an issue if we were just raising them now. Was there some historical look back? And he said, no, it's when you raise the rates, you're okay with that application to go forward. And that would help with the water meters. And that, and so that part of the grant would then be able to be completed, okay? So discussion, council members, I'm gonna move back a little bit, so.
Curious as to what the current amount on our line of credit that we borrowed, where are we at?
We took a $1 million line of credit on July 1st, and we borrowed $800,000 of it so far.
My understanding is that it gets borrowed and paid back. What is, what is, so right now we're at $800,000?
Yeah. But what we do, we borrow it when we need the money. We wait until the property taxes are collected, we pay it back, pay it back, which we did in December when we collected. No ground, but collect the money, we pay back what we borrowed in. Now we borrow more when the main taxes get in the mail, we'll pay the line of credit back for that. But that means we gotta go from May 15th to June 30th on what's left.
What does that cost per month, an approximate? An approximate number?
Well, if we borrowed the whole million, it'd be about, I think it's about $4,000 a month. On the interest. But we only pay interest on what we borrow, what we lose.
Is there a formula presented for this increase, or is it just simple?
For the increase in the rates? Well, the formula is that we're losing $500,000 a year in operating revenue. That's the form, that's the formula. I, I think I gave everybody one of those, did I print up a sheet for everybody? Everybody got that?
Yes.
If you look, you might want to, I'll get you one, Jonathan, sorry. If you go back to, uh, 2014, there was a loss in 14 and a loss in 15, but they raised the rates in 16. So in 17, the loss was minimal. Okay, it was 60, $6,700. But it started gradually getting more and more as the years went by. And last year, the operating loss was $534,000. So in other words, we, we bill each month, but we don't, in the current rate structure, we're not billing here enough to operate this system. This is therefore a standalone system. The rates have gotta go up.
So this increase basically is trying to cover the, the lack of increases for four years?
Well, more than, more than four years, yeah. You gotta increase the rates to get to where we break even at the end of each fiscal year. That's, that's not even taking into account what the water sewer owes the general fund at this point.
So there's a large water user that wasn't billed correctly, and the mayor worked on it, has that been paid? It's a large, it's a six-figure number.
Yeah, the $130,000 for the permit has not been paid yet. We're, um, sending out appropriate letters and notices, and it's, but it's been discussed. But it's not, um, so we're gonna have to work out some kind of payback X and then going forward to, because, yeah, actually, we get that in writing.
Still working on that.
Yeah.
The town derby or a village derby pays money to the city for sewer, is that being paid?
Yeah, they pay there. This is, this is all due to the rates we charge.
That's it?
Do I have any further questions?
Okay.
So what would the actual numbers for each account be? Like if, un-metered, what would that quarterly cost be?
We bill, we bill about $430,000 average on a quarter. Uh, this, the wa, the water is a, I don't have any, I think it's 170, 180,000, and the sewer is a 200 and some odd, the balance of it.
I mean, per resident, how much would they, what would their bill look like?
Oh, well, based on what the base rates are, this is such an example I can use, and it may not have, it was, the flat rate, the, a flat rate pair is 192. Okay, so you may be up in 250, 260, somewhere up in there. That's the simplest analogy I can give, it may not be exact.
But that's what I was looking for, so.
Yeah.
Councilor, any questions?
Now, keep in mind, the base rates on the meter book will be exactly the same as the, as the non-meter. And the usage will have to change.
Councilor, any questions?
If we're gonna do this with the anticipated vote, we need to know what it is.
Right, and we're getting that.
Well, we're just right now throwing out speculations.
Right.
It might be this much. We need to know how much it's gonna be before we put it to a vote.
Sure, of course. But I'm saying, are there any other questions?
No, I have no question, other than the fact-
Yeah, we are gonna get that next.
The NP would be enough to pay the difference between about $430,000 average on a quarter to $100,000.
I understand that.
No, I've got to figure out-
So the president is asking, what is the number that you would like this motion to contain?
I can't tell you exactly. I think it's gonna be around, I think it's gonna be 40 or 50% on the base rate, on all the base rates. And then there'll have to be some on the, that a mayor on the, on the usage part, the meter part too.
So my thought is, do you have anything? My thought is that we should come back with the exact ma, number, right? Come back with the exact number or close to it, and put it on, uh, the fourth, and make that actual motion. Is that going to be a problem? Say why.
I worked for three days on the base rates, trying to get it up to where it is. I'm up to 40% so far, and I'm still a little shy, so. I just, I can keep working out till I get to a figure that's gonna be exact.
Yeah, I think that the need is close to an exact, with a cap.
Well,
I mean, are you, is it-
I started with a 50% on the base rate.
So you're, if you're saying, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure that we're being- if we did 50%, you would be comfortable that we would hit the break even that you need? And, or?
Well, in combination with the usage rate increase.
Right, and how much for the usage rate?
Thing to figure out.
Right, but, so what I'm trying to get at is, what is the rate that we're asking people to pay? What are we going to increase this fixed rate?
Well, there are several base rates. But there's five or six base rates in the water, and four or five in the sewer. And if we, we all go at 50% on all of those, it would be 50%. Like, um, the connected residential, okay, the rate may be $71 a quarter. All right, so if you go at 50%, that's gonna wind up being about 130, something like that. There's, there's several rates, there's all kinds, there's a whole list of base rates on that. And I've gotta go through and calculate each one, see how much that, much extra income that's gonna bring in to get us over that hump.
Would it be the same increase for water and sewage?
No, no, the water fund is not in as bad a shape as a sewer fund. So I think if we can get 15 or 20% on the water fund, and, you know, I'm guessing 50% in the sewer, now that'll get us close. But on top of that, we gotta figure out what the usage rate per gallon is. All right? You know, like $2.15 per thousand gallons over 13,000 gallons. Now, we gotta figure out how many gallons that is they use in a day's time, how many customers there are, and how, the rate's gotta go up to make up the difference. The thing is, Mayor and I talked about it, if we get this done before May 1st, it won't take effect until the September billing, anyway. I know what you can do for this fiscal year, but. Well, I, I'm working on it, please. I know you're busy.
So I'm gonna come back to the council members. Yeah, um, Councilman Sean, is your thought that we should have the treasurer come up with those numbers and then put this on for the fourth, or do you?
Yeah, so in the past, there's that spreadsheet that we're, we're presented with that had the, changes, that's a big word, right? Uh, changes, just to, so we have the visuals of what the numbers actually look like.
I'll come up with it.
But, yeah.
Same.
Same, right?
Yep.
Yeah, 'cause I've just been, I've just been doing these figures to see how close I can come to what we need. I mean, I don't wanna, it's gonna be a burden, everybody, a lot of overburden, everybody.
Right. So I haven't brought a motion, but I am going to allow a couple of comments if we keep them brief. Is that all right? Is everybody okay with that? And I ask that each please come up and-
Sure.
And bear in mind what you just heard, but also bear in mind that the treasurer is going to go back and do some calculations for it.
Yes, and I think it's important, um, what you use for your calculations. One thing that I never hear anybody talk about when they talk about, well, you know, this year was a loss, and this year was a loss, and this year was a loss, and therefore, we've gotta raise rates, is nobody talks about how much money is actually in the fund to begin with. If I ran a lemonade stand one year, and I brought in, uh, $400 in income, and I spent $300 to make, to buy the lemons and do all the work, I'd get a hundred, I have $100 that year that I put in my bank account fund. I call it lemonade fund or the water fund. And then the next year, I'll just say I got 100 more, and by five years, I had $500 sitting in the bank account. The next year, lemons went up in cost, and I had a loss of $100. And I think right away, well, I got, do I have to raise the rate, the cost that I'm, of the amount I'm charging for my lemonade this year? My customers expect I can sell it for 50 cents. And I'd say, and I'd go home to my mother, and I'd say, do I have to raise my rates? And she'd say, well, Ann, no, not this year. You're only down 100 this year, but you got 500 in the bank, and you're not interested in making a profit here, you just wanna break even. So I could go, actually, for five years of losses of $100 each year, and I'd bring it, I'd bring that bank account with a fund, I'd bring my fund down to zero. And I, I don't hear any point, anybody saying, how much money is in the water fund in a certain year? And I'm sure back in 2010, when John Ward was the, um, chief.
City manager.
Pardon?
City manager.
He was the city manager, sorry, sorry, chief. Oh, he was the city manager. And he decided he, he was gonna put some money, he was gonna take some money from water and sewer to pay his salary, because he needed money for streets that year. He didn't take money in 2010 from a water or sewer fund that didn't have any money in it. So this process of the city started in 1918. We became a city then, and monies went into water and sewer, and expenses were paid out of water and sewer. But you really need to always look, it seems to me, at how much money is in the fund to begin with, to find out if a loss this year, next year, and the year after are problematic. So I'd like to know how much money's in the fund. The second thing is, when I saw the, um, data that was given to us, um, as to losses, on that, though, all those sheets, it said how much income you actually took in. Well, that's good, but in terms of how much was being expended, it used the budget expense. The budget expense, we all know, is a guess. You predict each year how much you think you're gonna spend, and that's in the budget. But you have actuals for all of those other years, actual expenses. And I didn't look to see which way it was, was it worse or was it better? But if you don't deal with how much you actually took in and how much you actually spent, as opposed to how much you guessed you were gonna spend each year, you're not dealing with the most accurate numbers that can get you to the rate you need. Now, I'm not denying that you guys have done a wonderful job this year voting on the water budget for the first time, looking at the water budget and talking about it for the first time, changing the budget so it reflects by asterisk where the salaries are going. You did a fantastic job, but I'm, I'm just saying, please do a fantastic job of carefully figuring out, is this an actual total loss? Or is it just, um, a loss this year and last year? And secondly, if they are, if you really have a loss going on, use the actual income you bring in, and use the actual, um, money you expend, and you're gonna get a more accurate, uh, figure of how to calculate those rates. And I would like to see, not just a guess of 50% in, in somebody's mind, but actually how that got calculated. And I think you all now know that you really wanna know how it was calculated. You can't just give up, um, because it's really complicated, uh, on making that calculation yourselves, 'cause it's hard for all of us. And, and please do it this year, please, please, check it.
And I think to that is what we just asked the treasurer to sit down and do, uh, want to be looking at, and where, and to be using actual numbers. Ms. Beal?
So I just feel like I've been beating this drum for quite some time, and it's been falling on deaf ears. And now that we're in a crisis moment, I'm hoping that people will listen. I think everybody needs to stop. I think that you need to get the city attorney involved. Because you are now sitting as the water commissioners. You are not sitting as the council. And when you are sitting as the water commissioners, you are mandated by statute as to how you can set the water rates. And I'm not here in any discussion whatsoever about those statutes. You need to be looking at those statutes. Because you can only use the expenses to set your water and sewer rates. And if I'm reading the statutes correctly, I don't profess to be a municipal attorney by any stretch. Uh, that's why I think you need to get the city attorney involved here. But it appears you cannot use depreciation. And that was one of my big bones of contention with Ms. Dolgan, was that whenever she was creating these figures for losses, she was putting in depreciation, and by statute, it's not allowed. So I think you all just need to stop. And you need to start from square one. And you need to do it the way it's supposed to be done. And in reference to the deficit that you have from past years, I don't know how that factors in. That's a question for the city attorney. I don't know if the statutes allow you to make that up or not. So I'm really urging you guys, you need to stop. You need to go to your attorney. You need to see your statutes, and you need to be in compliance with those.
Thank you, and to that, there should be no misunderstanding or even an idea that we're not talking to the attorneys, or that we're not understanding the statutes, and that we're not actually going to use real numbers, so. Um, so we're not going to stop. We're going to continue and do it in accordance with the way we're supposed to do it, and come up with numbers, and explain why, and bring that to your attention. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
Yes. Handlance Newport. I do want to thank you, because we've been trying to get water and sewer actually looked at for about the last four years. And some of us got shat to death for it, some of us got abused in other ways. You guys, this is the first time, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, so I don't think we need to make a motion. I think it's understood, we're all in agreement, that we're just gonna move this, right? And we will be looking at this and getting back, um, who the managing manager and this, even though he starts the 11th, we're still gonna share with him some information. Okay, so thank you for that. Thank you, treasurer, for that. It was very important that we got this out. And thank you, council, for the discussion, and thank you for your comments, because I know you've been looking at this. We're there? Okay. Next item, comments by members of the public. Next item, comments by members of the public. We're going to be opening the floor to public comment for each agenda item. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present, and that the meetings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council members are, excuse me, city council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon the city matters. City council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings, in that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council. To conduct orderly and efficient meetings, I'm going to request that the public's cooperation and compliance with the published guidelines when participating in the meeting be upheld. So I thank you, and please remember, you all need to be recognized, you're going to have a certain amount of minutes, and you need to get your comment in. It's late, and we have other things to still continue on with. So we'll. Go, council. The first person is Ms. Lads. Please state your name and your affiliation.
My name is Pen Lads, I'm a Newport City resident, and thank you for your intimidation. As some of you know, because of the craziness that has been happening in this room for the last year, particularly as I was watching previous members of the council and a previous mayor appearing to interfere with what was happening in a way that made absolutely no sense, so I did a Freedom of Information search and asked for information. From that, I got amongst the first batch, I got an email from previous mayor Paul Manette, which said that he had deleted, purged, removed, kept some of his emails on his server or on hi, his own personal computer, and that others had somehow vanished into either cyberspace or God knows where. That was obviously a concern. Those emails that were possibly to be brought back, I gather, were brought back, and haven't, I got some of those again through the same Freedom of Information search. After that, I realized that there was more than one person who had retired at that point from the council, the other person was Melissa Pedersen. So I did a search for her emails, because they should have come in the first batch, but, but nothing came. So the information that has just come back because of that search was that Ms. Pedersen's emails were all deleted from the server sometime in early March. I wrote back to, to the lawyer yet again, and said, I would like to know by whom, when, have any of them been relocated, or have they vanished totally? I was told that they had all, quote, vanished totally, they had been deleted, and that the other questions couldn't be answered by the attorney, because they were not authorized to do so. I get that. However, you all are authorized to do so. I really would like to know, we all would like to know, why documents that are important have suddenly vanished? Who else's have vanished? What else has vanished, and why have they vanished? My first question there would be, what are we covering up? And I think as citizens, we have a right to know that. Clearly, there's a lot of chaos around water. If we've been asking for years for information, and we weren't able to get it, that's a matter of concern. But if people are deleting emails, and the irony here is that every email that comes from the city has this little disclaimer at the bottom that says, this is to be kept as a permanent record, those are not the exact words, but that's what it says, and yet, nothing has been kept. I hope you're all concerned.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Barnes?
Beth Barnes, Newport, Vermont. I'd like to share some thoughts with candidates hoping to win a seat at the table. I became mayor on March 7, 2023. On March 11, I sat for two hours listening to advice from two long-serving former elected officials, Paul Manette and Melissa Pedersen. I trusted their advice, after all, they had just about 30 years of service between them. Mr. Man, Mr. Manette advised to, quote, "Never conduct any formal business via email," end quote. He apparently did not follow his own advice, which led to the reprehensible act of deleting public records. Incidentally, I did not heed his advice. At the same two-hour meeting, Ms. Pedersen advised me to become friends with the police chief for my own safety. This, again, was in an email. What that means, I do not know. I was already friends with Travis, but I did not feel unsafe in any way. Mr. Manette and Ms. Pedersen advised me to record all meetings. This advice made me very uncomfortable, but again, I trusted them. Ms. Pedersen even followed up in an email on her personal account the very next day, saying, "It would be better to pick up a small inexpensive recorder instead of using your phone. That way, if ever a public records request was made, or a legal action was taken, what they would get is the recorder, not your personal phone." I believed them, because I trusted their years of service. All of their advice was bad advice. I urge the new councilors, whoever they may be, be very careful who you trust. When seeking and following advice, number of years served does not equal trustworthiness. Also, when a fellow elected official attempts to tell you how and how not to conduct yourself, challenge them immediately. No elected official can tell another elected official what to do. Mr. Charbonneau is out of line dictating to me what I as mayor should do, and how I should do it. I believe a future with Lori Grim and Rick Uffer Chase at the table is a bright future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Beal?
I just wanted to speak to the executive session that was had tonight. I just, I found it kind of disturbing, discussing a personnel policy, it's not specific to any one employee, there's nothing confidential going on, and even if the attorney is advising you guys in that regard, there's nothing that stands in the way of, of having that discussion happen in open session. You know, the people that are affected by this are the people that we as citizens have to interact with, day in and day out, and, you know, we have an interest in this. We want to make sure there's consistency in our city staff, and that whatever's going into the personnel policy is not such that our, our city employees might be, you know, victimized at the whim of the political, you know, agenda of the, of the council at the time. I mean, the council changes every two years. You can't have people that are at risk just because the council changes, and there might be a personality conflict, or a personal vendetta. And so it would have been nice if we had been included as the general public in that discussion. There was no reason to have this behind closed doors, there just wasn't. And I just don't think that it's, it's a level of transparency that the residents of Newport are deserving of, and I think you should reconsider this stuff as you move forward. I really do. You're, in my opinion, abusing executive session.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Grim?
My name is Lori Grim, resident of Newport, and for the record, I am a candidate for city council. I really just came up tonight to say a big thank you to a couple people. First of all, the Newport City Downtown Development, thank you so much for your winter Saturdays. I did not participate last year, but I did this year, and had a great time, and I just wanted you guys to know that Saturday night, I met a couple from across the, the mountain in the Ridgeford area, and they were so excited to come to Newport, they enjoyed the night, they said they would come back next year, they're going to come back this summer, take the boat, visit the area, so I just wanted you to know that. I want to thank Mr. Vashon for responding very quickly to a request that I had from him last week about a matter that came up last fall, and I just appreciate that you answered that very quickly for me. And I just want to take a moment to say thank you to Mr. Wilson for all the years of service. We've not always been on the same side, most of the time, but I always appreciated his conversation, and I just want to say a public thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Walsh?
Jay Walsh, resident of Newport. So several of the candidates and others here feel we should move away from issues of the past and simply move forward. I have noted that same opinion. In the words of Winston Churchill, "Those who fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it." We all know that Mayor Barnes resigned due to being bullied by members of the city council. In the past couple weeks, she supported her claim of bullying by publishing an email sent to her by Councilman Kevin Charbonneau while she was mayor. The council meeting following Mayor Barnes handing her resignation, and Mr. Charbonneau went on a long-winded speech about asking Ms. Barnes, "What actions have I done that are considered to be berating, intimidating, and bullying?" I was astonished when I was reading Mr. Charbonneau's email to her, that he accomplished to, he accomplished to include all of those violations of Mayor Barnes' personal and legal rights into one email. Bravo. Berating, intimidating, and bullying are just the tip of the iceberg of the violations contained in this one email. He also violated Vermont law by both giving her false information as to her authority as mayor, as well as telling her that she cannot, she can and cannot do with the authority that she actually had. Telling her that she should not involve herself in city contracts, or inquire about the status of the big hole. Claiming in this email, this is not the mayor's responsibility. You speak only for the city and the count, with the consent of the council. Here's what you need to do, and just stop. Mr. Charbonneau's obvious, obviously does not know when he is bullying someone, or when, or that he is aware, not aware of the laws of the state.
Very simple.
There is no authority, from the Secretary of State, there is no authority in the selectmen to prescribe the method by which another elected official performs his duties, nor the power to prevent his carrying out of his official responsibilities by the imposition, by them in their arbitrary restrictions. Furthermore, board members shall not act on their own. Officials who are elected or appointed to serve on a local board have the authority to take action only as part of the board. The law provides, when joint authority is given to three or more members, the concurrence of the majority of such numbers shall be sufficient and shall require the existence, their exercise. This means unless the board authorizes an individual board member to negotiate a contract or make a public statement about the board's policy or position, an individual member of the board does not have the power to negotiate or speak for the board. So bullying, intimidating a public official, acting outside of his legal authority, interfering with city contracts and union negotiations, I don't know how in this city anyone can condone such actions by an elected official.
Thank you for your comment. Next item on the agenda is new business. President Wilson?
None.
Councilman Charbonneau?
None.
Councilman Vashon?
No, thank you.
Councilman Curtis?
No thanks.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yeah, I do. I'd like a motion to approve liquor license applications, one from Family Dollar, Green Mountain Foods, which was, yeah, I'm here, and Comble and Clarence.
Do you need individual motions?
No, I think one motion for approval for them, they're all retail.
All retail?
Yeah.
Matt, have a motion to approve the three retail liquor licenses as requested by the treasurer?
I'll make that.
Have a motion, or have a second?
Second.
Motion in the second. Once. For the discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and motion is carried. Come here. Okay, I have some. The Northern Borders Grant was approved for the Northeast Kingdom International Airport. That means that a new terminal building is scheduled. The Act 250 Land Use Amendment application is currently in review. Operational Storm Order Amendment application is in review. The project will actually be advertised in spring 2024, and construction is anticipated to be in the summer of 2024, so you can anticipate a new terminal. And that is just the beginning, okay? That's, and it's so far, it's been expanded from what it started. Okay, now, the council members are elected officials, I've heard a lot of discussions about things that may be agreements, policies, et cetera, over the years, that need to be in place for non-union people, because we have those in place for union people. I am actually working on a professionalism code conduct policy, that I will then get that draft and share that with the city manager, and we can then go forward and include whatever other department heads are, we are necessary, such as the police chief and his department, and we'll all discuss that. So that is definitely in the works. But most important right now, I'm honored and so pleased to have with us today our newly appointed city manager, Jonathan, whose name I will butcher, because I studied Spanish in school, and I'm French, okay? And the council is eager to begin working with him, and while he does officially begin on March 11, I have actually invited Jonathan to join us at certain events. He's actually already started to speak with us and getting to know the city, and so I am going to ask Jonathan to stand up. You have a short period of time, but please, meet your constituents.
I just want to say it's an honor to, to be here in Newport. I grew up in Newport on Sias Avenue. I moved to Chittenden County 13 years ago to attend Champlain College and the University of Vermont. My family grew up here, my family still lives here, and is sitting in the packed little room. So it's just, right, it's a small community, really happy to be back here. We actually just are in the process of signing a purchase and sales agreement to be in Newport City, so that's where we're going to end up. So please, you know, my door will always be open, come talk to me. That's, you know, how we get things done and learn about things, and we can help move the city forward. So again, thank you, I really appreciate all the support, and looking forward to starting in a week and a half. Thank you.
So let's hear it for Duncan's family. All right, rise up, rise up, rise up, rise up, all right. Okay, the next item on the agenda is old business. President Wilson?
Yes, I'm gonna just read something here, this is really about my last meeting. I want to thank the voters in Newport for trusting in me to represent them for the past 22 years, of which the first 21 years were fairly pleasant, the last year, not so pleasant. I want to thank all the city department heads for all they do for the city. 22 years, during this time, I've worked with six mayors, and I will break it down in just a little bit, I'm going to, because I, I'm guilty of being in the white man's club, or the old white man's club. Six mayors, two were women. I've sat through with 22 council members, little old there, five were women. Two city managers, one was a woman. The interim, and now we have one. The interim, and now we have one under contract. I shouldn't break down the sexes, but no, we get this all the time that this is the old white man's club. We welcome women to run, okay? Side note, in the 22 years in talking with former city managers in Florida, none were ever bonded. So I'll say. This March, five persons are running for two seats on the council. In my opinion only, through the newspapers and reading good old Vermont or Newport Rocks and Newport Hopes, this is one of the nastiest campaigns I have ever witnessed. And we're becoming more entitled on personal attacks. You can attack me after tonight, or two weeks you won't be able to attack me anymore. All five plan to bring trust back between the public and the council. But in the last year, the council has been subject to some of the following comments, both in public, face to face, and by the good old "I'm safe" social media. And in my words, comments to the council are also directed at me. When you attack the council, I'm part of it, as are all of us. Some of the following could be thought of as bullying. These are from, comments from former council members. No names. "We as a council are disgusting. We're all a bunch of cowards. We should all resign." Me, I feel present, fellow councilmen from bullying the former mayor. Obviously, I was unaware of it. Lately, I'm starting to get more aware of it. This is a new one. "We need fresher ideas. My thoughts are stale." I'm too old, because we need young ideas. All I'll say is, I'm younger than President Biden, Senator Leahy, and Senator Sanders. For over a year, I had been counseled, brow beaten on, which we're now doing water sewer, but I failed to learn, okay? But I did comment back then that maybe the teachers needed to teach a little bit better. While running the meetings, the resignation of a former mayor and most of those until the election, I'll tell you what, I didn't do a service for a lot of Newport because, in all honesty, and I made comment, I felt safer in the rice paddies and the jungles in Vietnam than I did facing the hostile crowds. Now, you have a lot of good comments, but when you present it and continue with a harp, to me, it's, no, I'm not looking at you. I'm just looking at your crowd. Then I think you've gone a little bit too far. Okay, now, as council members, we have to continually absorb this from the public and not respond. On 30 years in military, it's pretty hard. I would respond immediately. But God forbid that we attack, attack at you. That would be wrong. We just absorbed it. This is not how we build trust between the public and the council. In my world, that erodes any confidence between the two groups. And we're all in this together, I hope, Newport. I'd like to say a few things, a few years ago on Election Day, three members turned in identical resignations when the election failed to go their way. They must have violated the quorum guidelines because the letters were identical, whatever. But I do feel good tonight as I look back on the good that I have been part of for the city. When I first got on the council, the Campbell Development on the end of the lake road, their water source became contaminated. I was shocked when the council itself said, well, they didn't want it back then, so we're not going to help them. My comment was, do they pay taxes? Yes, they do. Twenty, roughly. Don't quote me. It could be one, one, approximately 25 cottages and homes. We got them their water. 25-year upgrade and extra capacity for the sewer plant. And I think that's going to come around again, not too far down the road. And let me just throw a couple of things. Hopefully, I'm not being timed. The sewer plant, at the time then, it was going to be about $4 million, of which Derby had bonded for a million of it. And we paid the other three because we owned the majority of the plant. Well, when it come time to ante up, Derby decided not to spend their portion. So we kept the extra capacity. And they are very close now to running out of. We hold a golden nugget. They're going to run out of capacity. And then they're going to have to come to us. We built a water treatment plant while I was around. The bike path to the city that everybody seems to love. That was a long process, except for many of those. The Long Bridge, that was about eight years before when they first were going to do it, the state, and then when we did it. We had two options. One was half of it. You know, do a half one year, and then we bring the road across the other half. Would have been on the hook for our portion of the $6 million for $600,000. We as a council decided, oh, just close the bridge off. We just saved $300,000 for the, for the city. The parklet, it's a nice parklet out here now. And I believe even the downtown organization is going to put a kiosk in there with our permission, of course. I was initially against it because I didn't think our taxpayers should have to foot a $50,000 bill for that. When they, we're going to have the grand opening, I said, no, I'm not going to go. I opposed this. But then I found out that another organization paid $55,000 for the parklet. So then I supported it. So I am tight. I hate, you know, it's, when money we spend comes out of my wallet, too. The, going forward, the water, the reservoir cutting line is complete. That's great. But that took about 12 years of process to do it. The Eastside Water Tower. A week ago or two weeks ago, we signed a construction permit for C cards to start erecting it in spring. That was first brought up about 11 years ago under John Ward. Things don't go fast. This, for the city, is in the way. And I got heavily involved in saving the Seabok, which is a community-based outreach clinic for veterans up here on the hill. It serves approximately 850 area veterans. All I did was contacted Leahy, Sanders, Senator Hassan from New Hampshire, Peter Walsh, Governor Scott, and all our contingent that supports us in Montpelier. And we saved the Seabok, or powers above saved it. With my benefit, 850 veterans. I still go to White River every six months. So as you all, or whoever gets on the council and wants to move Newport forward, I think we've done a pretty good job here as a council getting everything in place for a big movement forward. In closing, and I put, stop attacking, try to support the council. They're not bad people. And they stepped up to serve. They didn't step up to be continually subject to, you can use whatever term you want. I call it some bullying. A lot of good comments, but when you, there's a way to present it. And when you come down and start calling us a bunch of cowards and fools and we all ought to resign, you know, you know, you can get a lot more with sugar than you can with vinegar, I guess. And they get, we as a council, we get paid for two monthly meetings a month. In January alone, we all gave up five meetings. I'm almost done, for interviewing and interviewing. So they're going above and beyond. They don't need abuse. And we brought up, and I know about citywide appraisals. The first one, we had about 22 appeals. And when someone appeals, normally it's a three-member team with justices of the base and council. Have to go out and check the houses out. That's just on their time. So the second appraisal was approximately 85 appeals. God forbid when we get this next one. But they, they, they're volunteering to give up their time. They're not bad people. Okay? And again, for the majority of Newport's citizens, it's been my, well, all citizens, it's been my pleasure to look out for this city in your best interest. And I'm going to end this with one comment. Words heard. And directed at me was, "You may have been a big shot in the military, but around here, you're nothing." I think that I've done my share for the city, and I thank everybody.
And other than that, I have no hold of it.
Councilman Bashan?
Nothing. No, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Curtis. Treasurer Johnson? Controllutarian? Okay, so of course I got to say something. So I do want to address this. We, as I addressed at the prior council meeting, we became aware of the deletion of some public records. And we, dealing with that, and we got back what the former mayor had, and we're still looking at that. It did come to our attention that emails of the former council president, council member Melissa Pedersen were also deleted in March of 2023. Ms. Pedersen has told the city that she does not have any of the city emails in her possession. And we are reviewing that issue as well. And just like we did with the former mayors, we're looking at the trails and see what we can go in and pull back and see what's missing. And we are not just moving away from the situation. We are obligated to look at it, and we are going to continue to look at it. I want to say that both council members, Bashan and Curtis, are now confirmed bonded beginning March 1, 2024, in accordance with the vote. And I would like to wish good luck to all the new candidates running. And thank you for stepping up to offer your service. Next item on the agenda. You're included in that council meeting. You know that, right? Next meeting, regularly scheduled council meeting for March 4. So I'd like to set that meeting. I have a motion to set the regularly scheduled council meeting for March 4, 2024. I have a motion during the second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Oh, you're going to sit here for a while now. Next item on the agenda is adjourned.
I'll make that one.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, and the meeting is adjourned. Aye. Tell me what time it is.
9:21.
9:21.